Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the public hearing for Monday, May 20th. We'll start with the roll call. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Corey, Ms. Larrabee, Ms. Pereira, Ms. Roderick?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the public hearing on school choice. Deb, do we have any citizens' input?
We do not.
We do not. I'd like to entertain any discussion on school choice for out-of-district students in grades six to 12 for the 2025 school year. Any comments? Oh, I'm sorry. That's good. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meetings through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Any discussion on school choice for out-of-district students in grades six to 12 for the 24-25 school year? Hearing none. I think I gotta say it three times. Any discussion on school choice for out-of-district students in grades six to 12 for the 24-25 school year? Thank you. School choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the Fall River Public Schools employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 24-25 school year. Any discussion on that item?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia, please.
Please have the superintendent give her a recommendation for the public, just so everyone knows what we're talking about.
For this one?
Anyone.
Yes. So, school choice is for students who live in another city or town, and that we have an agreement with sending school that, for us, it's a secondary issue. We allow students pending room for six through 12. For elementary, we, since those classrooms, those grade levels fill up very quickly, that's only restricted to employees' children per the bargaining unit. So, that's what this school choice vote is for, for us to continue with this practice.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Thank you, Superintendent. Again, school choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the Fall River Public Schools employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 24-25 school year. Hearing none. Finally, school choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the Fall River Public Schools consistent with the employees' contract for the collective bargaining agreement for the 24-25 school year. Hearing any discussion? Hearing none. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion adjourned. Second. Discussion? Hearing none. Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira? Ms. Roderick? Yes. Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Adjourned. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee for Monday, May 20th. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira? Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. Salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meetings through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Citizens' input? We have a number of speakers tonight. I'd like to first ask up Kristin Rousseau, Norwood Street, Fall River. Three minutes, please. Thank you.
I practiced. Mister Mayor, Superintendent Ponce, and members of the school committee, my name is Kristin Rousseau. I am a 20-year veteran of the Fall River School Department and an FREA member. I am here representing the special education and MLL departments at the Laterno School. The Laterno School is a four-unit building with one foundational classroom at each level and five substantially separate classrooms with students in grades K through five. There are 110 special education students at the Laterno School, receiving services in an inclusion classroom setting. Percentages of special education students in the general education classrooms are between 35 and 40%. We have five licensed special ed teachers providing these services. In addition to servicing these students, teachers develop each student's education plan, design instruction, and provide instructional services. Our special ed inclusion teachers also collaborate with general education teachers weekly, meet as a special education team, to monitor students' progress and provide parents with progress reports for their students on a trimester basis. In order to provide the necessary services for our most needy population, caseloads need to be smaller and more qualified staff must be hired and retained to provide these students with the opportunities they deserve to become successful learners in the inclusion classroom. There are 122 transitional MLL students in grades K through five at the Laterno School that are serviced by two licensed ESL teachers. In addition, foundational newcomer classrooms in grades K through five are at a maximum capacity of 28 students, causing newcomers entering our school to be placed in inclusion classrooms and serviced by these educators as well. Students who are brand-new to this country, experiencing school in the U.S. for the first time, are not receiving the support that they so desperately need to develop their language skills. With the varying levels of linguistic needs, it is challenging to meet the needs of all students. DESI recommends two-to-three 45-minute periods per day of direct ESL instruction for levels one and two, and at least one 45-minute period per day of direct ESL instruction for levels three and four. It is extremely difficult to follow DESI's guidelines with only two teachers servicing the transitional population. Furthermore, due to the high number of students on ESL teacher caseloads, teachers spend three months of the school year administering multiple language assessments, and this takes away from direct ESL instruction for their students. In conclusion, we ask that you consider our most needy populations when advocating for our staff and support for these programs in the upcoming school year. Providing a work environment where they have manageable caseloads and enough time, support, and resources to complete their job will affect the quality of their teaching. Their performance will improve, and so will their students. Thank you.
And the next speaker is from Westport. I'd like to have a motion to waive the rules so she can talk. Can I get a motion to waive the rules for the Westport speaker? I have a motion second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee?
Ms. Pereira? Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Jenna Alex, three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Alex, and today I would like to address the necessity of paid parental leave. I have worked for Fall River as a teacher at Laterno Elementary School since I started teaching seven years ago. I learned the reality of parental leave pretty quickly through conversations with my coworkers. By my fifth year of teaching, I started to join in on these conversations. I had a lot of time saved, which put me in a good place for parental leave, because I had just gotten married, and I knew we wanted a family within the next few years. But then life happened. Two years ago, my husband was diagnosed with lymphoma. His oncologist advised against me working, since I worked with children, and his immune system would be severely suppressed during treatment. While it was the least of my worries at the time, all of my sick time had vanished in a matter of months, because I had to use what I could to care for my husband. Fast forward to now, and I am ecstatic that, two years post-treatment, he is cancer-free, and we are expecting our first in July. It has been such a happy time for our family, bringing with it exciting new challenges when getting ready for the baby. However, there is also the frustrating and unnecessary reality that I am now forced to take months of unpaid parental leave in order to properly care for and bond with my newborn baby boy. This current system just does not work. And it's not just me who this system does not work for. It doesn't work for new educators in the district. It doesn't work for people who have changed careers to become educators. It doesn't work for anyone who has had to take FMLA for themselves, or to take care of family members unexpectedly. It doesn't work for anyone who has decided to have more than one child. Think about this. To have enough time saved to cover parental leave for a second child after their first, educators would have to work for four years without using any sick time. It does not work. We are in a time where we recognize the benefits of both parents having the opportunity to bond with their child. We recognize the need for birth parents to recover physically and emotionally. Parents deserve to do these things without the worry of financial hardship. Lack of paid parental leave causes hardship for families. It causes hardship for the educators we are so desperately trying to retain, and it leaves these educators feeling forgotten by a district that historically prides itself on taking care of each other. This is why the members of FREA are united in our determination to get an agreement on paid parental leave.
The next speaker is from Brockton. I'd like to entertain a motion to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules.
I have a motion second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Robert Gorman, three minutes, please.
Yes, I'll try to keep it that. Good evening, esteemed members of the school committee. Fall River has a teacher retention issue. I've seen the billboards lying the highway on my way home, and I can speak to the fact that we've had a particular issue retaining secondary-level STEM and special education teachers. We've had positions that go unfilled for entire school years. However, you've been able to retain me for seven years, and I can tell you why with two reasons. One is that I have seen enough progress to give me hope towards being adequately compensated for the services I and my peers provide, and two is the community of fantastic educators I've been able to surround myself with. When I started here, that sense of community was profound enough that it was easier to overlook the then-smaller differences between salaries in surrounding districts, or in districts that were less of a commute for me. It's a stark difference to today, where if I were purely salary-motivated as a math teacher, I'd have my pick of the litter between Brockton, Taunton, Bridgewater, Rainham, or even New Bedford. Fall River has one of the lowest salaries in the area. All of that is to say this: The average Fall River teacher never had more buying power in recent history, say the past 30 years, than they did in 2010. That was around $66,000 at the time, or $93,000 in today's money. Contrast that to right now, where the average Fall River teacher has never had less buying power in recent history. Since 2010, the average Fall River teacher's salary has increased by a combined 24%. That's true. But in that same time, inflation has increased 40%. That's a 16 percentage-point difference that we have to make up. It's important to note that even at our peak buying power in 2010, that salary still wasn't especially competitive. At the same time, Brockton was offering a salary that was $9,000 more, Taunton and New Bedford were both offering $7,000 more, and Bridgewater-Rainham was offering $5,000 more. The fact of the matter is this: There were years in that span of time since 2010 where we took 0% or 1% pay increases, martyring ourselves instead of standing up and fighting for a fair contract. Make no mistake, those years where we allowed inflation to outstrip our pay increases were the union telling this school committee that it was willing to take an effective pay cut. In a world where each year sees state and curriculum changes that increase the burden on myself and on my peers, we cannot allow this to happen again. We need to see more progress being made towards adequate compensation. We need more than a decade overdue, we are more than a decade overdue for a pay correction. No more pay for taking, not more pay for taking on additional responsibilities, a pay correction. If you want to retain the talent currently present in the district, you need to give us a reason to be retained. And if we want to be competitive, you have to put in the effort. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to waive the rules for a speaker from Pawtucket.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
I have a motion as second. Any discussion? Deb, roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Three minutes, please. Alexander Souzer, Blaisdell Avenue, Pawtucket.
Hello, hello. Mr. Agia remembers me from RPA. Coogan, you took a bunch of my hats when I was walking the halls of Durfee. It's good to see you guys again.
They're under the table, Al.
Oh, good. Anyway, so, this is my dad's jacket. I'm not wearing blue like all my beautiful friends here. He went to school in 1980, graduated in 1981. 1980 Carter's America, beautiful time. Anyway, so he was an Azorian immigrant, like a lot of people in Fall River, and he was actually the first person that suggested I become a teacher. And I think back then, it was probably pretty compelling. You know, you could retire after 25 years of service, and, you know, who doesn't like the summers off? That kind of thing, right? But I think a lot of things have changed, including the salary, right? It's actually gone up four times, approximately, fourfold, since 1980. But let's talk about what it takes to become a teacher, right? So, the cost of tuition is now five times as high as 1980, and of course, we have to get master's degrees now, so it's, you know, compounded in that way. In the 80s, most, let's see, most of those students had virtually no debt, right? I think my mom worked at a donut shop to pay for her tuition. And in 2024, we all know about the rising student debt crisis. I, myself, have a master's degree in a technical scientific field, and I still have to pay another $3,000 just to keep teaching. You know, get that when we have a teacher shortage, makes a lot of sense. The tax on teaching. So, the cost of a house has gone up seven times, and I think we know that in Fall River, it just keeps going up. You know, the train, that will eventually come theoretically. No matter how you look at it, we're losing money, right? Teachers have lost money, what is this, the fourth decade in a row or something like that? So, let's assume that despite the math, you decide to become a teacher anyway, and you want to get a job in Fall River. So, if you get a job in Fall River, you'll start at 7% the average amongst comparable schools in the area. And once you've been here for a while, like me, I'm master's six, I believe, you make 11% less than most schools in the area. And let's say you stick it out, and you've been here 12 years, and you take some classes to advance your educational status, or, you know, you're at the top, the top of the step. You actually make 20% less than schools in the area. So, it's not like Fall River makes up for it by being a particularly easy place to teach. We have a very large ELL population, and I think we just heard from Laterno, and, you know, we understand these problems. So, I want someone to explain to me why I'm even here, right? Why? As I, as I continue to stay here, I make less money. I'm here because I love Fall River, right? My dad's from here, I'm from here, I went to, I went to Durfee, I live in Providence, I cross that horrible bridge every day, right? Because I love this place, right? And no matter where you go, if you throw a rock hard enough, you will make more money at that school, right? At some point, it's insane for me to go to my wife and my potential children, hopefully that will happen one day, and say, "I want to keep teaching at Durfee." It's selfish, right? So, we need to make a decision. Either you care about teachers, and you care about the education of the school, or you, or we, as a society, admit that it's not our top priority.
Thank you. Next, we have a letter from Dennis Borges Moss Place that will be read by Deb Cabral.
Dear fellow members of the school committee, I hope this email finds you well. I am writing to you today with a deep concern regarding an ongoing issue that has greatly affected me personally and has the potential to harm the overall well-being of our school community. Before delivering into the specifics of my concern, please allow me to provide a brief overview of my career background within the Fall River District. Having been born and raised in this community, I have developed a strong connection and sense of loyalty towards our educational institution. I first joined the school department in 2007 as a third-shift custodian, and through hard work and dedication, I was able to progress within the organization, eventually assuming my current position as a first-shift district-wide senior custodian. Throughout my entire tenure, I have consistently received positive feedback from management, and I have been given achievement awards, being commended as a model employee with consistently, who consistently goes above and beyond in performing my duties, even given outstanding achievement award by the school committee. My commitment is evident in my perfect attendance record spanning 14 years, as well as my continuous efforts to enhance and improve the Fall River school system. Over time, I have become a reliable support system for many principals and other administrators throughout the district, willingly volunteering to work every day during the challenging times of the COVID-19 pandemic. Regrettably, over the past year and a half, I have started to feel targeted, bullied, and harassed within the workplace. Unjustified attacks on my salary have occurred during open meetings, rooted in false statements, lies, and baseless allegations. Moreover, I have been subject to unnecessary investigations, which have ultimately proven fruitless. When these investigations failed to yield any wrongdoing on my part, I have been unjustly targeted with further falsehoods. Most recently, I applied for three positions within the school district, and I was recommended by the respective interview committees. However, despite my qualifications and strong endorsements, all three positions were denied due to, due to the influence of a school committee member. I have dedicated considerable time and made numerous sacrifices for the betterment of our school department, often prioritizing its demands over my personal commitments. It is disheartening to realize that my efforts and achievements have now seemingly fallen victim to political powers. While I have accepted that my professional advancement within this district may no longer be attainable, it is imperative that I speak out against these injustices to protect future employees from similar experiences. I implore the committee to take my concerns seriously and address the issue appropriately. It is disconcerting to note that retaining skilled and dedicated staff members becomes increasingly challenging when other districts offer more attractive incentives.
That's three minutes. That's three minutes, Deb.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Just, I'd like to ask the superintendent to weigh in on those. As far as I'm concerned...
We're not going to comment on citizens' input right now.
Can I finish, please?
Go ahead, but...
So, what I'd ask the superintendent is to reply to the school committee based on this individual's accusation that the school committee has a say in the hiring, because he tried to indicate that it was the school committee that did not. Superintendent does the hiring, not the school committee, and I'd like a response to the school committee related to this, please. Thank you.
We're not going to respond to those letters right now, Mr. Agia. Finally...
I didn't say "right now."
Robert Velou, 70, Anthony Street, Fall River. Three minutes.
Dear members of the Fall River School Committee, I hope this email finds you well. I, Robert Velou, have been employed through the Fall River Public School for the past 13 years and am currently serving as the groundskeeper foreman. I am writing to express concern and frustration regarding the ongoing personal and departmental harassment allegations. These accusations have not only been a direct attack, but have had a continuing effect on the well-being of the school community at large. As previously mentioned, I have been a part of the Fall River School Community for over a decade, beginning as a junior custodian in 2010. Over the years, I'm continued, my continued loyalty, dedication, and trust to this community has deepened, fostering professional relationships and exemplifying the strengths of my counterparts. This motivation and drive led me to my current position. Throughout my tenure, I have gone above and beyond with any requests at hand. I have received consistent, positive feedback on my work ethic and management. My commitment to the school department and colleagues are evident, always striving for what is best for the school system. Disappointingly, for the past two years, I have been unjustifiably targeted within the workplace. There have been numerous false accusations regarding my productivity, work ethic, and accountability. These allegations have subjected me to unnecessary investigations based on tainted evidence, all proven faults. All investigations have failed to generate any wrongdoings on my behalf. These harassments and accusations I have endured prove that the integrity of the school committee itself is flawed. This committee has belittled themselves and scummed into the, to an individual who unjustifiably abuses their authority privileges. It has recently been proven that dedication and loyalty results in being harassed. Over the years, I have made personal sacrifices for the betterment of the school department, prioritizing your needs over my own. It is devastating that my hard work has fallen victim to political powers. Although we cannot change what has happened in the past, I write in hopes that speaking out will assist future personnel with experiencing this behavior. I ask that this school committee take these concerns outlined above seriously and address the issue in hand appropriately. In this economic climate, it has been proven difficult to procure and retain loyal, dedicated, and skilled employees. This becomes increasingly more difficult when tenured employees have not been appreciated, targeted, or tormented with false accusations. All employees should be treated with dignity and respect. Of an issue, if an issue should arise, this individual should be addressed directly and not subjected to the school committee at large. A public televised meeting is not a place to state wrongful information with the employee having no ability to defend one's statement. Thank you for your time and attention with this matter. Please note that my concerns addressed are not singular. My hope is that my addressing my personal issues to the school committee, it will empower...
Okay. That's three minutes, Deb.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
So, I asked for an investigation of an allegation of someone running an illegal garage in our school department. Yes, I did. And I asked the superintendent to release her investigation findings to report to the public, because that is an issue that we all should be concerned about. I yield.
Okay, let's go. Recognition awards. The committee has one person we'd like to recognize tonight. I'll ask everybody to line up at the front of the stage. Everybody that's gonna leave now, we appreciate your coming, we wish you were here every meeting, but, and we're glad you showed up tonight. Thank you all.
All right, thank you very much. So, last month...
So last month, we did have a, one nominee for a similar award, and this month, we have the second person. This comes from Jay Correa, the 21st Century Site Coordinator. He would like to nominate this individual for her commitment to our students at both elementary and high school level in regards to the partnership they formed with literacy development. Her students worked last year and will again this year with colleague students in the 21st Century Between the Lines Book Club. They worked on an overall unit last year, and they will continue this high-quality project-based learning as our high school students travel to Green after school to read with, and to these elementary school students. It's outstanding to see students gathering together to further develop and enhance their reading, comprehension, and leadership skills. This individual is the epitome of an educator who goes above and beyond her daily responsibilities. Our district is both blessed and fortunate to have such a fine example and a role model for our students, and she's been doing this for many years, even after retirement.
Very nice, very nice. Item number four is the subcommittee updates. Tonight, we have special ed, alternative edge, early childhood subcommittee. Mr. Aguirre, our chair.
So we had a very, very productive meeting. We went over a pre-K update, which several of the items from that meeting elicited some further information that was needed relative to funding and decisions that are being made. So I believe we have some updated information for today related to that. We talked about the timing of the, making the decision, and I believe we're going to at least make a few decisions today that are going to help move that process forward. Dr. Braunhardt mentioned several job descriptions, trying to go through the departments and identify positions that need updated job descriptions, which I think is needed periodically, and in this case, we want to align all of our job descriptions appropriately in the counseling department, so that'll be on the agenda for tonight's discussion as well. The alternative school assignments, we had to just clarify what is the process for when a student leaves regular school and goes to an alternative school, and that process is that the assistant superintendent will be the ultimate arbiter of when the student can actually go or not. So that was just a key point to reiterate. The RPA was there to present the program of studies and some various programming changes that they've made. Principal Riley's in his first year down there, and they're working, working hard to make some changes to our programming that's going to benefit the children in that department. We also asked for some additional feedback, so we had the subcommittee, they make some changes and come back with how the process should be. So tonight before us is other items that I would encourage everyone to vote for. It was a productive meeting, and we were done in an hour and a half. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Superintendents' report, Superintendent Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the hiring update. As of our last, last month, we have had 37 new hires, 10 teachers, four administrators, 11 paraprofessionals, four educational support positions, and eight operational support positions. We have also lost 19 folks, 10 teachers, two administrators, five paraprofessionals, one educational support person, and one operational support person. Additionally, we have received notice of six retirements, three for the end of the school year, and three that are going to happen at the beginning of the new school year, and those include two teachers, one administrator, two custodians, and one paraprofessional. Currently, we have lots of positions still posted. We've heard, I think Ms. Russell commented on fully staffed special education classrooms and couldn't agree more. We continue to struggle with filling those positions. We have, we had last month a, a large recruitment fair which yielded 98 prospective candidates. We also participated in the Merck event at BU during the April break. That yielded 18 prospective candidates, and we also participated in the Bridgewater State event on May 1st, and that yielded 20 potential applicants. And that's it for the hiring update. And finally, you all received a list, as we've done in the past, of end-of-year activities for all schools. These range from graduations to promotional ceremonies to field days and everything in between for you to preview. Certainly, you are invited to attend as many or as little, but we thought you should have on hand all of these dates and locations so that you can hopefully support schools as much as your schedules allow. And that's it.
Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Aguirre.
Madam Superintendent, can you please clarify the speaker that was referring to the ELL and special ed earlier today?
Yes.
Is that an issue of unfilled, like the positions are in the budget, they're just not filled? Or is it an issue of that we don't have enough positions? I think it's important to kind of clarify that, because...
They are absolutely correct. We have had positions that have remained open. We have budgeted positions, but we are struggling to recruit candidates for both ESL as well as special education.
Thank you. So, so, so can I just ask a question on that? The, if we can just get the report, I know during the budget, this came up a few times, and I had made the suggestion that rather than fill, leave a, a position totally unfilled because we don't have somebody that has a license, that we would look at hiring additional supports, whether it's a regular teacher or someone, to fill in, because I think that's something that, it is aggravating if we have the budgeted positions and we just don't even have a second person to assist the main teacher. But if you could just take whatever they said and keep it as a one pager, I'd appreciate it to just...
Yep.
We got to know what it is. I think we've, the budget has gone up tremendously, so we have a lot of positions, and I think that's one of the things. The other thing I just want to give is just my first personal opinion related to hiring. I believe that we're right now, and we're going to see it later on in the agenda, that we're on the cusp of hiring a new superintendent. And I believe that personally, that we should be holding off on hiring major positions like principals, HR directors, and the like, when we're going to have a new person, whoever that person may be, within a couple of weeks. I know we have to move things forward, but I think it's also potentially handcuffing the person that when they come in. So my personal opinion would be to hold off on these out of respect for the next superintendent and work collaboratively with them as they go forward. Just my opinion. Thank you. I yield.
Okay. So I do want to say one thing that was heavily put on the internet and everything, that the Durfee graduation rate and in the city of Fall River, you saw a number of 53%. That's not even in the world being accurate. I think, I think Durfee's at 52. I think the Fall River Public Schools are at 74. I had numerous conversations with the producers over Channel 12. They did amend the story and the article they wrote, but I told them it was an insult to every teacher in our district that we had a 53% graduation rate, and the school committee was up here talking about things other than that. So I want you to know that that was a mistake, it was not accurate, and they did fix it. Because of you guys is the reason it went up. Thank you. Next item up is the approval of minutes. I have a series of them from 7:1.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just, can we pull the minutes for March 18th? They are complete, but they were inadvertently left out of the packet, so we will put them in with the June, so I just don't, we can't, we have to exclude that.
So the March 18th one, we're not approving?
Motion to approve all except 7.2.
Second.
That will be, we're approving the minutes of the regular school committee from 3:11, the special, the minutes of the special meeting from 3:18, the minutes of the public hearing from...
Not, not that one.
No, not 3:18. That's the one we're excluding, sorry. 4:08, and the minutes of the joint meeting from 4:09. I have a motion a second. Deb, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of travel requests, including one that we're going to add on for the Viveras School to go to Cogswell Farm on May 28th. I think you all have it in your packet.
And one for Roger Williams.
And one for Roger Williams, both from Viveras. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion to approve.
I have, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Any discussion on travel? Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is an acceptance of donations. We have two with us tonight. Could I get a motion to accept and then...
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion to second. Deb, could you call the roll, and Superintendent Potts will explain them.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Superintendent?
Sure. On behalf of the Farland Corporation to the CTE program, Ms. Sylvia, Cynthia Sylvia accepts $1,115.62, and that was to be used for student activities. And also from various donors, the list is attached, individual donors to, to the athletic department. Mr. Buston accepts a donation of $4,770, and that was to help fund a trip to Cooperstown. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. As we always do, we have a couple of grants tonight. Does anybody have any questions on the two grants listed, the Perkins and, and the Title III? Hearing none, could I get a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion a second on the two grants listed. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 11 is the approval of contracts. We have probably, I don't know, six or eight there. Does anybody want to hold on any of the contracts?
Can I just ask a question?
Mr. Aguirre.
All of the ones for maintenance have gone through the proper facilities subcommittee, correct?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I have a, I have a motion a second. Any other discussion on contracts? Deb, could you call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, I'm going to ask the committee to take item 1210 first with your agreement. If we could have a motion a second to jump that item up, it's the superintendent search, and we have Glenn Kucha here from the MASC. Any discussion on that? Could I get a motion a second?
Second.
I have a motion a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Glenn, you want to come down? This is the superintendent search update presented by Glenn Kucha, the executive director of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, we have provided your secretary with the report of the superintendent search committee. I'm going to assume that you all have a copy of it, and that at this point, you may wish to announce the names of the candidates recommended by the search committee to go forward to the public stage of the process.
I'm getting there, Glenn. Where's 1210? I don't have them.
Yep, you do.
Just give me yours. The four finalists are Tracy Curley, Elizabeth Begalt, Anna Riley, and David Thompson.
That's correct, sir. The, the responsibilities of the school committee for the final stages of the search process begin with accepting the recommendations of the search committee, or modifying them or rejecting them, but we certainly hope that you would accept the recommendations, and then begin to plan the final stages, which would include inviting the candidates to come and spend a day in Fall River and to meet with members of the faculty. That includes internal candidates who can spend time meeting with the school committee and their work site. The second phase would be that once the candidates have visited the district, the superintendent search committee recommends, and we recommend, that the school committee invite those candidates who are spending a day in the district at some point very close to their visits to the district to have an opportunity to meet with the community and community stakeholders at a forum such as this, where they can pose questions to the candidates, meet them, get a chance to get close, and have an opportunity to ask the questions that pre-to-date have only been asked by the search committee. Once the candidates have interviewed, the school committee would then set up public interviews. There would be due diligence reference checking that could not be done until the candidates' names were public, and from there, move forward to deliberation. So it's up to the school committee now to schedule mutually convenient times with the candidates, if you'd like to invite them to spend a day in the district, or to schedule and/or to schedule finalist interviews in public. At this point, every phase of the superintendent's search process involving the school committee and the candidates must be public, so there'd be automatic transparency. You may wish to conduct virtual site visits with the candidates by having them round up people in their district to meet with you electronically, or you may ask them to host a visit that you might make to the districts where they're currently working. We're doing less of that than we are doing virtual meetings. It's very awkward for candidates. First of all, they've taken quite a risk by allowing their names to be made public, which means that some fortunate person will be selected superintendent, and three people will be known as the person who wasn't hired in Fall River. So it does take some element of courage to participate in the process. We try to make it more palatable by doing the visit to the sending district electronically, virtually, so that there's no, the notion of coming into a district and asking your colleagues to organize reference checking that could be done in another way can be rather awkward. On the other hand, there are districts that want to visit the send, there are school committee members who want to visit the sending districts, and that is not inappropriate as part of the process. Then ultimately, the school committee will meet with the candidates in public, conduct a public interview, and then deliberate. We strongly recommend that when the school committee reaches consensus on its choice, that the motion to hire them should be made conditional upon the successful negotiation of a mutually agreeable contract of employment. You don't want to have a candidate voted to hire and then come in with demands for salary and compensation that are beyond your willingness to reach. So that should be a negotiated process. I can also provide to, to you, Mr. Chairman, and through the secretary, information on our recommendations regarding questions that people should ask when they do reference checking, questions that the school committee may wish to ask of candidates when they become public, although it is certainly the right of the school committee members to develop their own questions and bring them up at the school committee meeting. The school committee is not able to deliberate over the selection of questions in public, excuse me, in executive session. All question development by the body has to be in public session, but individually, you may craft your own questions and pose them to the candidates when they're here. The requirement is basically that you be fair and equitable to all the candidates, but that does not exclude your ability to ask follow-up questions that may be unscripted or even questions that you may feel are appropriate to particular candidates and not to others. to others. That's what I have for you in terms of the recommendations, and the written materials that include all of these things, including our guide to contracting, can be provided to you through your board secretary and shared. They are not confidential documents. They are not copyrighted. They are available to anybody that wants to see them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Kucha? Mr. Dragia?
Can you tell me when, I still to this day haven't seen your contract that we have with you? So what is it, when does your contract end as far as what your duties are versus when is it now in our domain to just determine what to do?
Our contract provides for compensation to us once you have a successfully negotiated and signed contract. If there's no contract, if the search implodes, if we have to do it again, that's just part of the same arrangement. There's no additional charge for that.
And do we have a contract, written contract? Services or expectations for what we can expect from?
Yes. That signed contract has been provided to the district.
Can we just get that from somebody? I've asked for it several times, and no one seems to say that we have it. But with that being said, I think the timing is quick. You know, we need to move quick. Now these candidates are, they're named publicly. We do have a timeline. Superintendent's leaving on June thirtieth, and when you had mentioned all these other things that we could do, is it totally optional to just do what we want? Could we interview these candidates two days from now and then select one if the majority of the members wanted it?
Well, you're not required by law to have the process that I prescribed. I mean theoretically, you could throw the whole thing out and hire me tonight as your superintendent, which I don't think would be a very popular decision with the residents of Fall River, but it's.
But what I'm saying is, all the things you articulated are options, not necessarily the way it has to go.
That is, that is correct, although, although the interviews must be in public.
Correct. You know, I just think my personal opinion would be to try to get this done as soon as possible so that we can do our interviews. At that point, whether you do a visit afterwards, I've seen a lot of searches where they get to like a final two, and then those two people individually come, but I think the interviews are the most important piece for us to get to ASAP. So with that being said, I make a motion that we accept the recommendations of the search committee, and we move forward as soon as possible with the interviews.
Is that one motion?
Second.
Okay. But I, we're, okay, hold on. But we don't have our full complement, and members won't be back till the end of the week, so we'll have to look at it after that. I'm not going to do anything until all the members are present.
No, no, I'm not suggesting, what I'm suggesting is just that, what I'm just saying is that as soon as possible, so we can say, when all of our members are here, you'd have to check with the candidates to make sure that they're available, because they also have jobs and the like.
Yep, absolutely.
I just want to just get it to the next step of, we move this process forward, because it's important we get somebody in.
All right. Let's have, let's go with the first one, the motion to accept all the candidates. I have a motion a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. As far as the scheduling goes, we'll work something out. I want to say probably as quick as we can, beginning of next week, if anybody has any questions that want to get to Glenn, I would forward them to him, and we can kick those around, and maybe we'll even have a special meeting to finalize the plans for what we're going to do going forward, but.
If anyone wants some assistance in developing questions, or if you want to submit them to us to be aggregated, which I'd share with, I'd be doing that in collaboration with your board secretary, who would probably be the best person to be the, to hold the aggregation, but we can work together on gathering those questions.
Thank you. Anything else for Glenn?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Kucha. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We'll be in touch. Next item up on the agenda is the vote to approve school choice that we discussed in the earlier public meeting for out-of-district students in grades six to twelve, for non-resident students in grades K to five, for the Farver Public School employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools. I'm pretty sure we went over this earlier. Any discussion on this? Mr. Dragia?
Madam Superintendent, can you please explain the documents that are below here in yellow and blue?
Right.
What that actually means?
Right. What Mr. Michael Azak actually put it together, he, what you have here, the ones with the blue shows the number of students we have that are our students that have gone out to other districts, and it outlines where they've gone, as well as the students that we have received from outside of the district by grade level. It's just a breakdown of that.
So the ones in blue where at a hundred and thirty percent deficit is because, is this vote, does it matter whether we vote this, or can the students go out anyway?
Please?
Can the students in blue leave anyway, regardless of this vote?
Right. They are currently in our district. They have a right to, if we accept them's school choice, they have a right to stay in our district until they graduate. We have currently sixty-one students that are out of district that came to us, receiving. Receiving is us, and we're sending out students also in the left column.
Right. So what I'm saying is, when we're sending out, does the vote matter whether we actually, can this, if a student wants to leave and go out, they can go out anyway?
Right. This is for our school choice. The towns or the cities that are also accepting students, they're doing the exact same thing. So this is for us and any students that we welcome into our district.
And what is the funding mechanism or the funding result of allowing any of these things to happen, including the collective bargaining?
Well, the collective bargaining, it's written in the contract that students, if we have room, K to five, typically our school choice is secondary, but if we have room in K to five, staff, children are allowed to come into our schools. It's all depending on.
But all I'm asking for is, what is the funding come out as? Do they become our students, or they get the same rate as us, or do they get less?
We get the same reimbursement, Kev, as any student?
They're ours, and we get funded for them.
Is Mr. Almeida saying yes? Because I'm not sure that's how it works.
Do we get the same as we get for the other kids?
So the kids that we send out, there's an agreement that we have to pay five thousand dollars per student that we send out to other districts, and that's all done through the cherry sheet, through the Department of Revenue.
And what do we get in?
Five thousand dollars.
So it's a swap?
Yes.
And how much is it that we get per student from a typical student in Fall River, chapter seventy, and like, what's the?
So the average for the foundation, it's eighty-twenty split, roughly eighty-twenty split, state versus city contribution. It's about nineteen thousand dollars a student.
Nineteen thousand versus five thousand. Thank you.
Anything further? Can I get a motion a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item twelve-two is the second read and vote to approve the school year academic calendar as presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent.
What you have before you is the second read. We have brought this before you before, so we're looking for a final vote and acceptance of a calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any discussion? Mr. Dragia?
Is there, I can't see it in front of me, but is there any issue with half days or full days? Is there any changes from prior years, or?
We have our two full days built into the calendar also, and I will say that, I said that last time, the big difference is that this year, because Christmas is on a Wednesday, we will be closing for two full weeks.
And all of?
Actually sixteen days.
And all of the schools still meet, are meeting the nine hundred and nine hundred and ninety hours?
Yes, absolutely.
Anything further on the calendar? Dr. Roderick?
Christmas is actually sixteen days, just to be clear, not fourteen, so we get two extra. Not that I counted.
Can I get a, can I get a motion a second on the calendar? I already have it. Deb, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dragia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Ms. Larrabee? Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item twelve-three is discussion and vote to approve the Robert Maderis Resiliency Preparatory Academy Program of Studies as referred by the Special Ed., Alternative Edge, and Early Childhood Subcommittee and presented by Kyle Riley, Robert L. Maderis, Resiliency Preparatory Academy Principal. I get a motion a second on that?
Motion to approve.
Do we want to hear from Mr. Riley?
Yes, please.
Mr. Riley? We have a motion a second?
Good evening. Just very briefly, I understand that the day I was out, we had this subcommittee meeting, and my administrators did a fantastic job, and so knowing that I have talent standing right behind me, they'll go into the details with you, but I really just want to share the program studies. We looked at it after our first year, and the most important thing we could do is make it a student-driven program of studies, how to get kids on a work site, how to get kids passing at different times of the year, how to make sure that we're meeting kids where they are when they come to our school. So this piece is a lot of work from a lot of people. It goes in with thought is, how do we make the school better? How do we move forward year by year, but we're tackling the most important things up front? So I'll ask Nicole Estrella, I had to look down at my paper because she's just got married, to make sure I get it right, Nicole Estrella, to get into the details with you.
Good evening, everybody. So most of the changes that we are proposing are going to live in the eleventh and twelfth grade courses. We will be moving from a two-house system, where our seventh, eighth, and ninth graders are in one house, tenth, eleventh, twelfth in a second house, to a three-house system. This will put our seventh and eighth graders together, our ninth and tenth graders together, our eleventh and twelfth graders together. In that eleventh and twelfth grade cohort or team, we're proposing that we semesterize all of the courses. This will assist with students who have credit deficits. It will also aid in engagement, where students will be earning credits more frequently throughout the year. In addition to this, we're proposing adding two additional graduations throughout the year, so we would have our traditional graduation in June, but also another in August for students who finish their credit requirements during summer school, and another in January for students who finish their credit requirements at the end of semester one. Additionally, we're looking to expand the options for students that are not necessarily live in-person courses, so this looks like online edgenuity courses, both in a live lab within the school day, as well as potentially outside of the school day for students who have other responsibilities. Additionally, school-to-career internships and employment opportunities that would allow students to earn credits for jobs they may already have, or for internships that we can connect them with that are in line with their career goals. On top of this, we are aiming to lower the total graduation credit requirement from one hundred down to eighty. Our initial proposal was ninety, which is one hundred less the ten credits of World Language that we do not offer at RPA. At the subcommittee meeting, it was suggested that we should maybe even go a little bit lower, so instead of asking for twenty-two and a half elective credits as part of that ninety, we're proposing twelve and a half, which would make it a total of eighty credits for graduation. I'm going to ask Drew Woodward to add anything that I have missed at this point.
No, I think Ms. Australia spoke very comprehensively about the program of studies. The only thing I would add about the edgenuity and credit recovery piece, the enhancement that we're asking for, is to have, to pilot an on-demand tutoring piece for the edgenuity platform, where students who get stuck, need extra support, could access a live tutor seven days a week to support them in their content. This does come at an additional cost of about sixty dollars per student per course.
I got a question. Anybody else got anything? Cut them off.
I have a question. You can go first.
All right, I'll go first. I'm looking at your program of studies, and for that population, don't you think there should be like a work experience component in there somewhere, where you can get the kid a part-time job, let him earn some credits, and get some job skills? I just didn't see it. It's probably me I missed it, Nikki, but is it in there?
Yeah, it is. So in the, again, in the eleventh and twelfth grade cohort, the work-study internship options will essentially be a larger menu that students can pick from, so part of that will be through the Urban Youth Co-op, which will have a workforce development seminar as a requirement, and then leverage that into more individualized.
You put it on the last page, Nick. You're killing me. No, it is there. I agree. That's what I thought was important for that population, to give them a chance in the real world. Thank you. Ms. Roderick?
So it was more of a comment. I actually really appreciate the three separate graduations, because I think part of what happens, and it happens in college too, where folks get really discouraged, right? And I graduated in January, but now I've got to wait all this time to actually be recognized for the hard work that I did. So I think that's actually, if we're looking at social-emotional learning, and we're looking at kids being able to meet their goals, I actually think that's a really good idea. And then your other pieces, when you just said about workforce development and having it included, it's not every kid is forced to have a part-time job, correct?
Correct. Again, that's sort of the menu that students would be able to choose from, which allows us, or will allow us, to further individualize for every student based on their responsibilities, their needs, their interests, et cetera.
Okay. And it just looks like you're moving more towards a, sort of a, not really a project base, but it kind of looks more like a project-based learning piece?
It will look more that way, yes.
Yeah, which in reality is what's developmentally appropriate, it's how people learn, all that good stuff. So I'm just, I'm in support of that. I just wanted to clarify that workforce development piece. Thanks.
I think the other piece, not to add on to it, but is the culinary that we've been talking about all year long, and it's up, it's put together, it's probably, I'm just guessing at it, probably a couple of weeks away from being complete. I go down there every day to check on it. We have floors, we have ceilings, just need really equipment coming in now, so that's going to be a big piece in-house, especially for kids that don't venture well into the community and need support right here in school. So that's another piece of it that I think is going to be a big help for students. And I'd be missed if I didn't talk about the cooperation of the district with Dr. Brownard, Drew Woodward, helping us out in our team as we're building it at the school. We're building a new administration team. Lori Crumley's here tonight. Luther Jose couldn't make it because of family, and of course Nicole, that you've already heard from. Things are coming together pretty well, and we know that it's going to be a constant opportunity for improvement each year.
Okay. Anything, Ms. Roderick?
Just to piggyback on that, I do want to clarify, when we talk about decreasing the number of credits, I know that some people will hear that as we've decreased expectations, and I just want to put that out there, that that's not what happens. I don't know if you want to speak more into that, because you could probably do it a lot more eloquently than I do, but before that even becomes a question, decreasing the amount of credits does not equal decreasing expectations for kids.
Correct. So all of the core courses will carry the same credit requirement as Derfie. The only credits that we are essentially eliminating as a requirement are the ten-world language, which we don't offer anyway. So in the past, we've actually been asking students to do ten additional credits in usually elective areas to make up for that. elective areas to make up for that. So, the other 10 that we are proposing deleting off that 100 would come specifically from electives, which again, we have very limited offerings in comparison to Durfee. So, holding the students accountable for all of those core classes, still some electives, offering the opportunity to earn those elective credits in new and varying ways, but all of the core courses will carry the same responsibility and credit-bearing as before.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a motion a second already, Ms. Perera. Mr. Aguirre?
Just a few things. Thank you for the presentation and taking our feedback. One of the questions I had after the meeting was, when you talk about 11th and 12th graders having something different, is there a change in the mechanism of when you become an 11th grader? At an alternative school, sometimes you're taking classes and you're either competency-based or you're able to jump up quicker. Is there something embedded somewhere that allows a student, let's say, that really starting to do a great job, and go from 9th grade to 11th grade in one year, or something like, do they jump, or how's that going to work?
Not necessarily. So, there is a table in there somewhere, I'm not sure what page it's on. But we will assign students their grade level based on what year of high school they are in. So, a first-year student would be a 9th grader, a second-year student would be a 10th grader. At that point, it's unlikely that most students would have a very serious credit deficit. At the third year and above, regardless of where their credits lie, we would have them in that 11th and 12th house, which offers much more flexible options for them to earn credits. But they would not be placed there solely dependent on where their credits are.
So, if a student was age, based on their age, that they would have been an 11th grader, they're going to be in that cohort to get to 3.
Correct.
So, they wouldn't be held back as an 18-year-old freshman, potentially.
Correct.
So, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I said this at the meeting to Mr. Woodward, that what's the reason why it's called an alternative school? And I wasn't being facetious, I think that's what we need to really look at, is it has to be an alternative, because if we keep doing the same thing, we're not going to get different results. So, I do appreciate your efforts to look into this, and I asked about the position of the chef, or director, whoever that is, I hope that's ongoing soon, so that we can, I know you went there, Mr. Riley, but Dr. Brownard said we were on it, and I trust that we are on it, and I'm really looking forward to it. That's a program that I think can do a lot of good things for our kids, and kudos to you guys for doing it.
We're on it. That particular chef is going to become a building sub that we have open right now in our building, so we can ramp up and get ready to go over the summer and go into next year.
Great, thank you.
You all set, Mr. Aguirre?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I have a motion a second on the RPA program of studies. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Flarvey?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriks?
Yes.
Mayor Kugel?
Yes. 12-4, is a discussion and vote to approve the following revised job description as referred by the Special Ed., Alternative Ed., and Early Childhood Subcommittee, and presented by Dr. Amy Brownard, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Strategic Integration, and Tom Kugan, Human Resource Director. Can I get a motion and a second first?
Motion to approve, second.
All right, I have a motion a second. Do we want to hear from Ms. Brownard? Dr. Brownard, please.
Hello. So, what you will find before you are three job descriptions with corresponding charts to show the transparency of the recommended adjustments to language and duties within. Over the last few years, at Durfee High School more specifically, our school counselors, formerly known as guidance counselors, they live at Durfee High School and at our middle schools more specifically. And the three positions are the school counselor position, the department head of school counseling, which is a position at Durfee High School only, as well as the director of school counseling. Over the last few years, the director of school counseling was part of the budget. A couple of years back, there was a more academic job description for the department head because of Durfee High School being the only school with a department head of guidance. In addition to that, the last time these job descriptions were looked at was back in 2005, if my memory serves me correct. So, we needed to review them, to bring them up to speed with current landscape of the work of school counselors, and to make sure that the job descriptions align with the duties that our staff are working diligently on day in and day out. We had an opportunity to share it at the subcommittee, as well as share it with the FRAA to receive their feedback, and so we bring them to you tonight in 21st Century School Counselor Job Descriptions.
Questions for Dr. Brownard. Mr. Aguirre?
Just on the director of school counseling and pathway, basically on all of them, typically there's a line in there that at the end says, "and any other duties that are deemed pertinent by their director." I don't see that on the department head one, or the, I think it's called director of school counseling and pathway development, that's technically the old guidance department head. And I'm looking for some guidance from HR or somebody to say, isn't there a line that we always put in there?
Right, there is. So, that was omitted, that needs to be added. Yes, you're right, all of our.
But are you looking at the same thing I am?
Yes, so we have to revise that.
Basically, it's up to 16, it says organize, facilitate, promote, but I think 17 should be just to say, things change and we can't know everything that's coming up. I do appreciate the salaries that we, recommendation that the subcommittee was to put the lowest to the highest salary, so that people know what happens. I, at the subcommittee articulated my concern with how the position was created, and then I feel like the school committee was snuckered by the folks that were in charge at that time, in that we said we would give one person a raise for the position to combine, and then that, and therefore would have eliminated the old position. And then it just kind of helped, somehow happened on its own. I don't think that you were involved in that, Dr. Brownard, I don't think Mrs. Ponce was involved in that, but I just think it's something we need to look at and make sure we don't do that moving forward, because I've been on this committee for 15 years, and I've seen this several times already. One year we get said, oh, we're going to do these, one person's going to do these two jobs. And then a year or two later, they say, oh, but we need that other job, so we can't play that shell game, it's just truth and advertising, what it is, and I think that's what you presented, so I'm going to support it based on that. But please, in the future, just tell us what it is and it's not. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Ms. Rodriks.
Quick question. So, I think during the subcommittee meeting, there was some talk, because it looked like one of the items was something about like, the director of counseling pathways position was coordinating all the 504s, and it looks like that was corrected in the job description, because if the guidance counselors are not doing that, and the adjustment counselors are, then it sort of made sense for that to align. And it looks like it was corrected there, but underneath in the rationale, it still says that.
What position are you looking at?
You're making me look at.
Department head.
Department head, because the department head, the department head would be working in partnership with our SEL coordinator?
Right. So, number 15 does say collaborate with SEL coordinator, I think that was switched from when it was originally proposed at last week's meeting, right? But if you scroll down, under where it says job description proposed changes, it still says that.
Are you in the chart?
I'm in the chart.
Okay, I might not have gotten.
And it could just be the way I'm reading your chart, but, you know, I don't do well looking at things on the computer, I do well looking at them in front of me on paper. That's just how my brain works. But it does say down there, number, add service district 504 coordinator, supporting implementation of student 504 plans.
After the subcommittee meeting on Thursday night, in a quick Friday to get it turned around, we changed the job description explicitly, because that's the formal document. I will go back and make sure that that's changed in the chart. The chart was mainly to give people a talking guide and a crosswalk for prior to the committee meeting.
Okay. I'm just looking to see which one was the accurate one, so the job description.
The job description is the accurate, but I will go back and cross-reference that chart, because that will also serve as a tool for us in the future.
Don't do it for me, because that's.
Just to have it on file, so I appreciate you noting that, but that's why.
I'm just checking to see which one is accurate. I yield.
Anything further?
Just a clarifying question on that same thing, in the job description, collaborate with the SEL coordinator to support implementation of student 504 plans and training for staff. So, is the, what we changed with the SEL coordinator, is that the person only in charge of the SACS?
Correct. So, that will be adjusted. I will be bringing forth also a revised, looking to take a look also at the student adjustment counselor job description, as well as the SEL integration specialist and the SEL coordinator. So, in the last few years, with the new positions being created and added to the budget, I think it's important in the next few months before next school year that we crosswalk those three, so that we can do a similar process of revising as needed, to ensure that there is not overlap, or that there is supportive overlap in those prescribed areas.
So, I agree with that, I'm just reading 15, just, it's real, just granular, but if a person was, if a guidance counselor was, if a school adjustment counselor is supposed to be doing the 504 plans, and they were doing it either not to the level that they should, or they just say it's not their job, whatever it would be, would they do it, would they report to the director of guidance, or to the SEL coordinator? Because if they're going to be the, SEL coordinator is going to be like the overseer of the SACS, I don't know that we shouldn't look at changing that as, and we could always change it after you come back with the other one, to like align it, because you really want to be able to say, you know, she's my direct supervisor on this, and you're my direct supervisor on that, so I think we should approve it, but keep it open, and we could always change it afterwards if it aligned better once you do the other job descriptions. Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? I have a motion a second to approve those three job descriptions. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Flarvey?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Rodriks?
Yes.
Mayor Kugel?
Yes. 12-5 is discussion update early childhood, it's presented by Maria Ponce, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you. So, we've gone before multiple subcommittees, as well as this full committee, since our last meeting. If you recall, we had scheduled a walkthrough at Bishop Connolly that became available as a viable option. We did the walkthrough and were waiting for, to look to see if that was something that we would entertain. We also were asked to provide some cost analysis, and to do some recommendations of the usage for 2501, and PACE annex to explore other options in addition to what we already had explored. We, as you know, and some of this, we've talked a lot about pre-K expansion, we've expanded our pre-K program the last two years, we've added 12 classrooms, and this is to accommodate and fulfill our compliance needs. I want to be clear of that, this is not universal pre-K. Our students, our kids, when they age out of early intervention at 3 years old, we have responsibility to provide services, and this is what we are doing. We're looking for, and more and more kids are qualifying, which has presented the issue of us being proactive in looking for additional space. We did, we do have classrooms at 2501, but we had an opportunity to, we have to explore those, that, it has three floors, we have students on the ground floor and on the first floor, but we're going to, we have a plan to inhabit that building, because we can't have students on the top floor, because they're little, pre-K students. Our current landscape, if you will, we have 33 pre-K classrooms, which is, as I said, the 22, in the last two years, that's an additional 12 classrooms. We have 16 classrooms that are located in four of our elementary schools. One of the things that we kept hearing was wanting to put them in our schools, we have exhausted our school space. We have seven classrooms that are located at 300 Easton Avenue, which we are renting that space, and we have 10 classrooms that are currently located at 2501, as I just said. We have 609 currently, 609 children in our pre-K program. 19 of those classrooms are full day, that's for 4 and 5-year-olds that are about to enter kindergarten, and 14 classrooms are half-day sessions, and those are serving students in 3 to 5, who are further along into entering kindergarten. Our early learning center at Northeastern Avenue, that's always been a temporary site, class size is reduced in that building, because those classrooms are a little smaller. Once we move to a larger space, we will gain 24 additional classroom seats, because now we have it capped at 12, because we can't fit typical 15 in each classroom. At 2501, we have, as I said, on the first two floors, we have 10 classrooms, that's five classrooms on the ground floor, which we intend for them to stay there, and four classrooms on the ground floor, and I think now we have five and five, but we intend to move six out, hopefully, and leave four. We intend to move, yeah, feel free to join, feel free to join, Mrs. Farias. And so, we're recommending, we did visit Connolly, there is plenty of space on the ground floor for us, if we so choose. We would recommend that we enter into an agreement, you have backup to rent that space for a year, and that would serve to, for us to move the classrooms that are currently at 2501 on the main floor, as well as to add any additional space, should we need space for expansion. Our ELC, there are 12 to 14 classrooms, Mrs. Farias, you can, I don't have to be the one, you can certainly jump in. We certainly want to create an early learning center, we are exploring, and we would recommend that we move forward with PACE and explore that as a site for future building, we could 12 to 14 classrooms there, and certainly would serve our needs in the long term. We're looking, we definitely need to look at school zones, redistricting our schools, changing those lines will impact enrollment at each of our schools, that needs to be a priority, and creation of a long-term strategic plan to fulfill our needs. Certainly, we've heard, I think Mr. Aguirre has mentioned this multiple times, and it is a good practice, we need to put a five-year plan, we need to have a short-term solution, which is what we're recommending, but we also need to be thinking long-term. As part of our five-year plan, the boundary piece is, that will redefine. So, right now, the boundaries for, let's say, Viveras might change, if we change those boundaries, it's going to impact their enrollment, we'll be able to shuffle and shift, that's a long-term solution, and that's going to be something that's going to, has to be planned out, can't be done overnight, certainly not going to be done within months. We need to really explore that, work with someone to redesign and redraw those lines, and analyze the impact and the implications of those lines. You, we were asked to do a cost analysis, went back to drawing board and added more, we got some feedback at the last meeting, what it would cost per classroom, as well as other costs that are within, that also are impacted, like administrative costs, related services cost, and what we get reimbursed per student. And we are also looking to, so doing the PACE center, building that out, renting Connolly in the meantime, we're also looking for the committee to vote on, officially vote on us moving the Stone School from where it is right now, and moving on Maple Street, and moving it to 2501, and then using that school, reopening that school as an elementary school, Westall School, because we need to relieve some pressure from the Fonska School as we add classrooms there. All of that will ease our served-to purposes, right? It will support our expansion needs for pre-K, and it will also support some of the work that needs to be done, and in releasing some pressure from Fonska. As we've said many, many times, Fonska is in the most densely populated neighborhood, it actually, there are 1,200 kids that actually could go to Fonska if we had a school that big, but only 600 and some students attend there. So, the other students are going throughout, to schools throughout the district. Opening Westall is not going to solve all those problems immediately, but it will release a lot of pressure, will solve some, will begin that work in creating a neighborhood school for the kids who really should be going to the neighborhood school, should be walking to school like other kids do in some of our other schools. So, we would be looking for that also, to open up a vote, so that we could open up the Westall School as another elementary school.
Any questions, any questions for Ms. Rodriks?
So, first question on the cost analysis, just when it says 176,000 is the estimate for a teacher and two paraprofessionals per classroom, but your total staffing is 5.8 million based on your 33 classrooms, but that number doesn't include your administrators or any related services or anything like that.
Correct.
So, what is the actual cost?
So, it's just over, it's just over $6 million. It doesn't include, on top of the $6 million, you have 1.8 million in transportation, which is fully funded by the city. So, you know, pre-K is an expensive endeavor, and it's, you know, it's not a moneymaker, so.
No, right, just when I did the math, it didn't, the math was not mathing, and so I was questioning where those other, like, how do those other services come in, because that number's not in here, so.
This is part of our transportation.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And in addition to, I don't believe the superintendent mentioned, I included an analysis on ELC, and what the cost is just for ELC alone, because that was one of the items that was requested the other night, so that is in with your packet.
Where? This is me missing things again. Oh, here it is, it's part of this one, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Aguirre?
For now.
So, I'm trying to look through and figure out what, so the slides, I don't think have changed appropriately, just if I was being critical, because the slides are still giving the impression, when you look at the cost analysis, that it's 5.8 million and 5.889 million, therefore, we just took out the word surplus, because that was just totally stupid to put in there, to be honest, to say we had a surplus, when we don't. And then you look at the 1.8 funding by the city transportation, the city's always, you know, hot time coming up with the money, and what, how did we fund all of the transportation this year? Did we pay for some?
We paid for some out of Esser, yes.
Out of Esser. So, you can't say, well, it always comes out of the city, because we paid it out of Esser. So, I find it. So I find it just, whoever, it doesn't, it's not only you, it's the team. I mean, everybody's been working on this, looking at slides, I would assume during the day. But you can't include, like, we helped them with Esser, where are they going to get the money to pay for the 1.8 million? So I think we're in deficit. But then, the other thing, like, the related services administrators, there, there has to be a budget to that. And I think that's what you tried to do in the, in the end, like, options, where one of them says a $600,000 deficit somewhere? Is that what you're trying to show by the yellow?
No, so the other, the other piece to everything is, I put together three options on how we can fund PACE, because I know that was one big, big thing that was discussed the other night, and the three options are in front of you there.
But before that one, the page before it shows cost analysis of a whole bunch of things, and then it says.
Yep, so that's just, that's just the ELC, Mr. Aguirre. That's the cost for the ELC.
What does that mean, ELC?
Eastern Avenue. Because it was requested an analysis of what Eastern Avenue cost.
So, in order to keep the early learning center open, we're losing $600,000?
Yes.
Nobody, nobody else has a problem with that? So if we lost $600,000 on it this year, that means if we open, how many years we've been over there, two?
This is our second year.
The second year. So if you lose $600,000 one year, that means you lost $1.2 million by not having a different solution than that center. Am I crazy, or is that what, like, am I missing it?
No. We've funded it through grant, we funded it through grants, so we've used ESR to pay for it.
Yeah, I know.
So it's been funded.
Esser funds are not necessarily, shouldn't have been just, let's just go spend money on whatever. You know, we have things that we need to do. We need to, we can't lose $600,000 and then say, well, we don't have enough money to give raises or other things, like, we can't get money twice. So when I look at this, I'm like, that's not even, I thought you were referring to the entire package of the related services, the administrators, so we're losing money on that.
Just so, you know, from my standpoint, okay? As your financial, as your financial person, pre-K is not a moneymaker. I would not recommend continuing to open pre-K classrooms. Obviously, we're required to for compliance, and we will need to continue to open those classrooms. But from a money standpoint, it does not make money. It takes, it's, it costs more to us.
And I would say, I agree. I agree with everything you just said, Mr. Almeida. My frustration comes in that over 90 days ago, in February, when we first had the meeting, when it turned into, Mr. Aguirre is the one that gave a 30-day window, and that's why the Tansy School parents were all upset and everything else. What we're showing here, based on this, this data, actually makes the point that we should be opening buildings that actually make sense financially, that we own, not looking at it, well, a lot of parents were complaining and whatever else. If we could save $600,000 per year, if we owned a building, it is a different argument to say whether we do this or we do that. We were just very quick to, oh, we tabled it, and then that's it, everybody, nobody's going to re-look at it. But today, or when it's May 17th, when this came out, that's the first time we've actually gotten a real cost analysis that I've been asking for, and other colleagues have asked for the same thing, for months.
But just, just to be clear, Mr. Aguirre, I've provided three different analyses at this, at this point. You know, originally, I provided an analysis on what the total cost was originally, based on what we're paying this year. And so that was provided upfront. And so it was requested that we provide something else, and I've provided that as well. So I've been trying to accommodate the requests that have been asked.
I understand you trying, and I do agree that you have submitted those things. My frustration comes into, I wonder how you, as the CFO, submitted those same documents to over a million dollars in salaries of administration, and no one said, these aren't what they're looking for, these are not what we should look for, because we need to know what the real number is. So it's not you, you can only give it to the superintendent. Superintendent is responsible for whether that's sufficient or not. And lo and behold, look at what we did after all those times asking. Now we realize that that particular site is losing $600,000 per year. So moving forward, whether it's one year or future years, we have to either do something different there, we have to get out of there, or we have to call the legislators down and say, you either have to fund pre-K like you do everybody else. Something else I've been saying, how many months have I been saying that?
Agreed.
And can I say, where is the meeting of the local delegation? Have we scheduled a meeting with the local delegation to articulate that pre-K needs to be paid like everybody else? Have we scheduled it? No, we have not. So sometimes people get angry, why is he getting mad? Why, I'm frustrated, because I've been saying that for months. It doesn't make any money, and it's actually costing us money. So for every dollar that we lose here, it comes out of the other teachers that we have everywhere else. And I agree with you, Mr. Almeida, but it doesn't solve the issue. We got a problem here. And it's not over just because we're going to say we're going to rent Connolly for a year. But that being said, I appreciate the, this is a real good analysis that has a real number. That's what I was asking for. I'd also like to ask for the same analysis for all of our sites, so that we could try to say, well, if we had a site that we owned at a different place, it's this amount. If we have them in schools, is it this amount because you don't have as much administration? There's got to be some sort of, that's what a long-term plan's going to be. They're going to say, look at all the facts. So I would like to have that for every site, and I'm sure at some point you can, you can get to it. But the third page of, you had the three options of how to pay for the PACE. We had asked some questions about the roof and the timing, and I'd like an update, because we asked for that update relative to the, I should say, the roof, like, plural, because it's one project, I feel it should have been two projects, but ultimately, where are we at with the roof? Because if we do all these things, as Ms. Pereira mentioned at the subcommittee meeting, and I wholeheartedly agree with her, we, if it doesn't come to fruition, we're going to have to go back to Plan B, I think was what was said. Any updates?
So the bids are not open for the, for the general roof piece, just subcontractor bids that open. So as soon as that opens, we'll have those hard numbers on, that'll be delivered to the city. And then, moving forward, after we verify those numbers, the city can accept, and then we move forward.
But we can't move forward, I believe you said, that we cannot move forward with building anything in the PACE Center, in the area that you're referring to, until we get the whole roof stunt and the sprinkler system?
Yeah, so once the roof, once the bid is given out for the roof, then the contractor will start 30 to 45 days later and finish that roof probably in eight to 10 weeks. While that's going on, the design and bidding process for the fire suppression system will happen at the same time, while we're waiting for that construction or during construction. As soon as we have that document, that we are looking for bids, and once we accept those bids, we will start construction inside the building with the intent that we will not occupy the building in those new areas until we have an operating fire suppression system.
And since the last meeting, have you received any information from the city that I requested of how we're going to, how they are going to fund that roof? Like, any assurances, like?
Yeah, I mean, what we've done is we've pulled back some ARPA projects, which we had some surplus left in, we've allocated, I want to say $3 to $4 million, I think, right now. And that's why I believe that the first round of bids should open up anytime. I know we've had people on the roof looking at how to move the systems that are on the roof, whether it's, was it TBS or a few of those other companies have already looked at their part of it. If we have to bond some, we may, but I believe when we look at all the pullbacks from ARPA, where we've given more than was needed, I think we can fund that roof.
And what is anticipated to cost? The roof and the, and the sprinkler system?
Fire suppression is probably a million and a half, $2 million, and the roof is going to be between three and five.
So six, seven million you're going to come up with? And my only concern is, I'm all for it if you have the money, but I'm sitting here watching and seeing what's happening on the city side financially, and say, I don't know how the hell they're going to come up with $7 million, $6, $7 million. So I think it would make me feel a lot better, like you just gave us more information, that we at least got, if it's $3 million in ARPA funds, you know, that's a good start. But I don't know if that has to be approved by the council. I'm just worried that we're going to get down this road, we're going to make this decision, and then it's going to, something's going to happen, and we're not going to be in control of it, and then we're going to be stuck with having to make rash decisions at the last minute. That's my only concern. The roof at the PACE, is that included in the, you remember we had a meeting, a talk at one of the meetings about doing the roof at the PACE Center separate from the other project? Because it was, it's under more our control, and is that all included in the totals that you said, Mr. Pacheco?
So the roof for the PACE is not anything included in our side, on our side of the house?
I'm saying, it's included in that number that you just said.
Yes, yes.
So if they spent $7 million, it's going to do the roof from, for both buildings over there, both, both roofs?
Yeah, between three and five on the roof, and then fire suppression will take care of the entire 90,000 square foot building.
Yep. And then when you get to the funding mechanism here of, I guess there's options, but can Mr. Almeida articulate what, what that means?
So the three options that are proposed, so option one is to rent Connolly, move Stone to 2501 South Main Street, and to populate Westall K to 2 for school year 2024, 2025 as a two-unit school. Option two is to rent Connolly, move Stone to 2501 South Main Street, and leave the Westall School closed for school year 24, 25. And option three is to rent Connolly, move Stone to 2501 South Main Street, populate Westall K to 3 for school year 24, 25 as a one, a one-unit school for one year.
And I think this is implying, just, I think anyway, because you had put four units in the budget, is that the?
So I put, so there were two units, so the budget itself, when I was initially submitted, was for.
Two extra?
Was for a K to 5 school, and it was a two-unit school. That's the way it was proposed.
So in number one, where you just have, you're going to save three, four, and five? Like, is that because you just want to do it K to 2?
Yes.
And you have a budget of K to, you have a budget of K?
Currently, I have a budget of K to 5 at the moment. So the additional third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade teachers would be, would be savings for that one year, to come up with money for here.
Because the part of the, this whole process that actually made sense was to alleviate some of the pressure in other places. And I believe we have issues with three, four, and five as well. So I'm personally not too happy with the fact of, we're going to have a school that's in working order, and you say we're not going to fill three grades of it for budgetary purposes? To try to, I just don't think that makes any sense. And I don't know that there's an option for filling the school with all of the two-unit schools like we had already said in the budget, and then put our heads together to try to say, where's the other money coming from? Because if you recall back, I suggested we save some of the money that we allocated last month, which I think was stupid. We should have saved that money, and we would have had some of this, but.
That money is being generated. Part of that money is here, this year. So part of the plan would be to pre-purchase materials this year to the tune of $1.5 million.
But out of where? Where's that money coming from?
Out of, out of this year's budget. So we would reallocate some of those funds that were allocated last month and allocate it to pre-purchase materials for the PACE.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Depending on which option you choose.
I get it, but.
It would come back to you.
With all due respect, with all due respect, this item right here says option one. Please, someone, please tell me where it says on option one for 1.5 million, that we are going to reallocate what we allocated last month, even though you were told two months in a row, I can tell you that from me, that we shouldn't have spent this money. So last month, we said, we're going to do this list of projects for all of these schools. It's public document, it's public record. Now, without telling the committee, we're just hoping to say, we're going to use 1.5 million of that to say, oh, those projects that we said we were going to fund, we're not going to fund those anymore. But we're not going to get any information on this?
No, that's not without telling you. You haven't.
Where is it?
You haven't voted on any option. Depending on which option, what we have, we have not spent the money on, let's say, playgrounds, for instance, I'm just using that as an example, that if you vote for that, we would be coming back to this committee to say, can we reallocate some money that we had earmarked for this and use it for prepaying? This is not about moving the money without, we know we have to come to you to do that.
But how ridiculous is that? Each of the three options says, pre-purchase materials, 1.5 million, pre-purchase materials, 1.5 million, pre-purchase materials, 1.5 million.
Mr. Aguirre.
Does it say that?
It was requested to us to put together a plan for options of how we could fund the $3.3 million for the PACE. We have the options in front of you, we're presenting it to you.
Right. It's disingenuous, is what it is. It's disingenuous, is what it is. Where are you going to get the 1.5 million? You please tell me what you and your leadership team have said, where this 1.5 million is going to come from? What are the projects that you're going to reduce? Tell me right now, please.
I can't tell you exactly right now.
Mister and Madam Superintendent, can you tell me? Because you obviously have had meetings about this and said, we're going to take 1.5 million dollars that we allocated last month and not do it. Which projects of last month are we now not going to do? Please tell me.
Well, I think we have to look at, what we had said is, we're going to look at the money that we're allocating for playgrounds, potentially, we don't know, now we are waiting for some back stuff for one of the elevators, we have to look to see what's available to us now and what we could move forward with in saying, let's take some of that money to use for working at PACE.
So we had, I don't know, was it a playground at the Green School? Was it the play, one of the playgrounds? $300,000, some thousand dollars at what school? Do you know?
No, we just did, we just did the Green School this year.
No, no, in this.
The Green School is a place to share.
In the Fonska. Okay. So we come to the school committee last month, superintendent's been told, I know it because I'm the one that suggested it, two months in a row, do not spend the 2.5 million because we have a pre-K issue going on, we might need that money. Two months in a row, I personally told superintendent. We get to the meeting, oh, no, we have to do this, we have to do this. Great. Now we say, we're going to spend a nice, we're going to make a $350,000 playground for the children that go to the Fonska School. Awesome. Everybody's in favor. Except, this month, based on not doing what we needed to do in the right way with, with the pre-K issue and doing things on time, we're going to say, sorry, Fonska School and all of your children, you're not getting that now because we need that money to pay for the, prepay for the PACE Center. That is what I see. I don't see anybody telling me that it's different. All I see is it's just not here.
Well, last week, you told us to go back to the drawing board to identify some funding sources, where we could use that money to fund PACE, and that's what we did. We looked to see, you know that we're an entity, we don't have a savings account on the side. So we were looking to see what projects we have, what we could move, and, and then come to you, to the committee, to decide, you know, is this something that we want to do? We were told last week at our subcommittee meeting, go back and see, identify some potential funding sources that could fund that project. And that's what we did.
I think we should go back and look at it. And the great part is, it's on video, and you can watch it. Because I, for one, as the chairman of that committee, did not suggest to anybody in the administration, please go back and look at funds that we allocated for another project and come up with them. That's not what I asked.
I'm not saying that.
Kevin, Kevin, Kevin.
I'm not saying that, so I asked.
But everybody said.
Kevin, Kevin, Kevin.
But when we were at the subcommittee, it was stated.
Just talk, please.
At the subcommittee, I asked the question, can you please tell me, where are we going to get the 3.5 million for the PACE Center? That's the question that was asked. And I wasn't told, we're going to take back the vote that we just took last month. I wasn't told that at all. I was expecting that, for whatever reason, the plan had to be amongst the superintendent, her leadership team, the task force, and everybody else in finance that was looking at it, that we knew that we needed to come up with $3.5 million to fund the PACE Center if we were planning appropriately. Instead of that, we said last month, we're going to take the 2.5 million that we got from the healthcare from the city that they owed us and spend it. The same people that should have been in that room for the last 90 days figuring this out, said last month, we're going to spend this money on these other projects. And I think it's disingenuous to come here today and then to look at this list and not have a memo? Like, where's the memos? Where is the most recent memo now that says, after the subcommittee? The one I have here, it says May 6th. That's the one, last one I have. So it articulates, we have this, we are going to do that, we're going to do this, how much this is, how much that is. After the subcommittee, I don't see anything. So you did all this work the day before the subcommittee, and then we slide in the last page of potential options for PACE building, pre-K build-out, three options, and don't tell us one time that 1.5 million is going to get clawed back. I personally don't. I personally don't, I don't agree with it, I don't like it, and I think there's gotta be a better way. If there isn't a better way, then what a failure of the last sixty days or ninety days of this process, because if, if that's what happened, that we spent two and a half million we didn't need to spend, and knowing that we were gonna claw back those projects, it just doesn't look good. To me, it doesn't look good, so I'm not sure I'm gonna vote for any of this stuff, to be quite honest with you. With that, I yield.
If I could, go ahead. In the last ninety days, we've done nothing but this, in fact, probably in the last six to eight months, it's been twenty-five oh one, pre-K, every day, every day. And besides all of that, there is a district that needs a whole bunch of other things. So, I think it's extremely disingenuous to say that we can't go and look under every rock and try and find the amount of money to do this. This is not an easy lift, and we're always asked to do it in such a short amount of time. Not by anybody's fault, but the system. So, we're asked to come up with this money, we're asked to spend the money right at the end, the end of the school year, knowing full well that the year's gonna end on the thirtieth, and now we need to spend three point five million dollars, just like that. The procurement alone makes that extremely difficult, but we're gonna give it the yeoman's effort and we're gonna try and do that. Now, coming up with some extra money for this, we start whittling away at what we can and can't do. I'm gonna use the elevators for an instance, for the, for the first example. The planning of the elevator at both sites is an extremely long issue. We had approached MSBA, not to blame them, but we had approached MSBA to use the consultants that were already on hand, so we could save forty-five days of just getting a consultant on board for RPA. Forty-five days, just asked them if we could add it on. A whole bunch of legal reasons why we couldn't do that, they gave to us, very polite, very forthcoming, and said, we can't do that. So, basically, that project has to sit, because it doesn't matter, I'm not gonna get it procured or encumbered by June thirtieth, so that's a dead issue. The exact same situation is at Morton, at Talbot. Not his fault and not the superintendent's fault. I was the one that helped put that list together. So, if the blame is gonna be played, you play it on me, because I'm the person who tried to get all of these projects in and spend that kind of money. As far as the playgrounds, the playgrounds, we could prepay and get those in, they won't be installed until probably Thanksgiving, by the time they come in. But we could've done the playgrounds, the playgrounds is still a viable option, and there's items like that all over that piece. But to come up with one-time money to spend in ninety days is very, very difficult. Now comes these three, these three options here. And the Westall piece, the twenty-five oh one piece, the rentals, the, I didn't know we were in the money-making business, I didn't know everything had to make money, but, and please bear with me, it's been a long day and a tough one, and I don't wanna go into details why. But all I'm saying is, please understand that everyone's working tirelessly on this. And I hear the, the thought, and Mr. Aguirre, if I was sitting in one of those seats, maybe coming out of my mouth. What I'm saying is, from this side, it's not a snap of a finger, it's not just looking for the three million dollars, four million, ten million, it's actually trying to spend it. And in public procurement, it is extremely difficult to do that. So, where we are right now is where we are, and going backwards and rehashing everything else really doesn't matter at this point, because I've got to try and get one of these projects off the ground, because more pre-K kids are gonna be coming. According to the expert, they just keep coming. I need room for them. And three hundred Northeastern Avenue, at the time, was our only option, because the committee threw out a couple of options that we brought, because that was a cheaper option, because we didn't wanna go to any other rentals. So, we were stuck, we did what we needed to do, and fortunately for the church, they had the open space, and we took it. And we're gonna, and we need to keep it for one more year because of the uncertainty. I can't eliminate something when I don't know I have it. I still don't know if I have Bishop Conley, because we haven't brought that up yet. But I have to have some place to put these kids. And I'm trying to fabricate as much as I possibly can with this, but um, something's gotta give. And I, and I, look, nobody should ever vote on anything they don't wanna vote on, but we need some votes tonight, or you can forget it in June, 'cause none of these options can be on the table in June, it'll be too late.
So, I think we're not in the business to come, to your comment about, we're not in the business of making money. I sure as hell hope we're not in the business of losing six hundred thousand dollars and not telling the school committee. I would hope that that's not the case, because I had sat here and paid attention. No one can sit out there on this administration or anywhere and say, to the school committee, when we chose to say Northeastern Avenue's the only option, not for one year, the second year or whatever, that we're losing six hundred thousand dollars by doing that. Yeah, we had grant funds and all that stuff, nobody told us that if we go to this site, it's one inadequate as far as the numbers because of the reimbursements and all that, and no one definitely told us, 'cause today is the first time in years that I've heard that we lose on six hundred thousand dollars on that particular site. So, my problem is, is just the planning, I guess, is the, is the point, that this has been going on for a long time, and when we look at the projects, I didn't ask you to bring those projects forward, I placed the blame not on you, Mr. Pacico, whoever said, let's just throw together a list like it's a Christmas list, rather than what it really needs to be. Realistically, you knew when you put that list together for us, that six hundred fifty thousand dollars for the RPA elevator is probably not gonna happen, the way I'm just hearing...
Well, no, I, I couldn't say that, because if MSBA was involved, it would've happened. So, I, I didn't know that at the time, and I couldn't ask that at the time, because when we did get the approval, I started the process. And as far as the Talbot one, that's a totally different situation, and it wasn't haphazardly put together, but it was items that we thought we could fund in a short amount of time. And as far as saying, prepaying for materials...
I'm sorry, gentlemen, I'm sorry, point of order, I'm sorry. I, I don't know why we're talking about Talbot right now, I appreciate you Ken, and I appreciate you Kevin, all the questions, but right now, we're supposed to be talking about early childhood, not projects that may fund a, a, a building that's not even on the agenda tonight, with all due respect. If we could just kinda stick to what we're doing here, just talking about approving Stone School, getting Bishop Conley all set, figuring out Westall, and let's worry about that stuff another day when it's on the agenda, is that possible?
Mr. Chair, I have the floor. So, relative to the actual document that you gave under this item, discussion number five, that's how this is relevant. This is what I've been talking about, the one point five million. That one point five million is not articulated in here like what Mr. Pacico just said. It might've made more sense if there was a backup document with this that said, this one point five million, here's what's happened since, and then you would go in to say what Mr. Pacico said. This doesn't explain it, but this is part of this discussion. So, all I'm suggesting is that it, if, what you're saying is a hundred percent true, Mr. Pacico? All I was saying is, didn't tell us it. Don't make it look like as if we don't have the detail. If you said, we're still gonna have the playgrounds, but we can't do that because of whatever, it's just a fact that it came out now, and it, it bothers me. To go back to the spending the money, out of every member on this committee, I've been the one that was saying all of this last year to the mayor and to anybody that would listen, that we know we owe us two point five million. Why are we not getting it ahead of time so we can spend it? Go back to the record and look at it. We just need to do a better job of, of saying what it really is, and I think you, sometimes, I don't know if you guys don't talk in your leadership meetings, but pick, like, pick some holes in some of this, like we would want everybody to do, and say, what does that mean? Can we identify that better? We wouldn't have had the, the nonsensical surplus word at the subcommittee meeting. This is what we need to do, is just get more info, and I'd probably be supporting it if you said, hey, we just can't do it. But I also think I don't like the idea of not having a Westall, uh, full. We have other issues. So, if we vote for this today, we're gonna know, say, months from now, when we have more kids that need to go to Westall, we're gonna have a full school? Like, why is this...
This, this is just a discussion, Mr. Aguirre, item twelve point five, no vote.
So, when, when is it that you're going to know solid numbers on roof, bids, all the things I just suggested?
We just told you that.
No, I'm saying, when is it that you, Mr. Pacico, would say?
As, as soon as those bids open, we're gonna know within fifteen days whether it's a thumbs up or a thumbs down. That's not contingent on this discussion.
Yep. It's contingent on the discussion about the pre-K that we had at the subcommittee and here.
But we're not even near that yet.
When is the bid opening?
Mr. Aguirre, can we stay on the agenda, early update on early childhood?
Yeah.
You made your point, does anybody else have anything else they wanna add?
No, I still have the floor, please.
I know, but I'm asking Mr. Pacico a simple question.
I think it's within the next couple of days. I, I...
Sounds simple, right? Wouldn't that be something that...
I wish, I wish my memory was better than it is, but I think it's the twenty-first and the twenty-second, which is tomorrow or Wednesday. That's my guess right now.
All I'm, all I'm saying, Mr. Pacico, is, at the subcommittee meeting, right, all I did was ask for some further clarification for the full committee. That's all, this is the same thing I'm asking for now. We didn't get as much as I think we should've had, and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further on that issue? Twelve point six...
Ms. Rogers.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Rogers, I didn't see you, go ahead.
Um, so, just on this twelve point five, so, these are your recommendations, we're not voting on any of those recommendations today. The only thing we're looking at is Stone and the rental agreement for Conley, but we are voting on Westall.
Right.
Right, so, my, I agree, we need to open up Westall to alleviate the pressure at Fonsika, right? There's no question about that. But one of the things that I'm worried about is that in the recommendations, in your five-year plan, we have, we're gonna redistrict the schools, right? And that's necessary. So, what I'm worried about, though, is we're gonna move those kids for next year, and then are we gonna be moving them again in the next few years? Because if we redistrict and we're looking at moving kids in, in different schools, are we gonna be looking at moving those kids again?
No, we wouldn't, because what Mr. Michael Azic did is, he drew a boundary within the Fonsika boundary, if you recall, one of the meetings, because that boundary is so large and identified students, over three hundred students that are actually within walking distance of that school, that actually belong, would attend that school.
So, is it fair to say that if we're gonna be looking at redistricting, and we're gonna be looking at balancing and, and redrawing all those boundaries, that the one that remains untouched would be Westall?
The new Westall, right.
Okay, because I would have a lot of concern about moving those kids in there now, and then in a couple of years, we kind of, you know, we've got all this information, we've redrawn it, and now, oops, we're gonna move those kids out again, 'cause that's way too many transitions for kids.
I agree.
Okay, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, let's go to twelve six, which is discussion and vote to approve the moving of the Stone Therapeutic Day School to twenty-five oh one South Main Street, as referred by the Special Education Alternative Edge and Early Childhood, presented by Maria Potts.
Motion to approve.
Before we do, I just wanna make sure that we do have a discussion with parents.
Yes.
About everything, same way we do with...
Actually, that was Principal Shaw, I would give her, she, we spoke to all parents, and they were all very agreeable to the move, they're very excited.
Is that a second, Bob?
Second.
I got a motion, a second. Any discussion, Ms. Rogers?
Just, um, I saw that we spoke with eighty-eight percent of the families, or am I, was I misreading that? I saw something like, a hundred percent of parents of the eighty-eight percent surveyed.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering what happened to that other twelve percent of families? I get it, sometimes people just don't respond, but...
Exactly.
Okay.
And so, a hundred percent, people...
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? I have a motion, a second, Deb, call the wall on the, on the move, the Stone?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Larrabee?
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve seven, is a discussion and vote to approve the rental agreement for Bishop Conley for twenty-four, twenty-five, as referred by the Special Ed, Alternative Edge, and Early Childhood, presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer. Any discussion on Conley?
I just have one comment.
Ms. Pereira?
I am gonna vote yes on this, but I just wanna make it clear to everybody that I, I don't agree with this. I feel like my back's against a wall, and that's why I had to do it. We're talking about where we're gonna find three point two million, that's not a conversation for today, we're not gonna solve it. But when we initially talked about expanding pre-K, that wasn't part of the conversation. And because I think this became a very emotional decision for some, which is totally understandable, but what we're doing right now is fiscally irresponsible. And I'll tell you, what I'm not gonna do is take a playground away from any kid in the Fonsika neighborhood. With that, I yield.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
I just wanna say, I agree wholeheartedly with Ms. Pereira, she articulated this at the subcommittee, and she's spot on right now. We are not making a smart decision, we are forced to make this decision, because I don't believe that we had the proper leadership along the way to make sure that we did what we had to do. We are forced to make this decision, so I'm gonna vote yes reluctantly as well.
That's classy.
I didn't say that.
No.
I yield.
I didn't say we didn't have proper leadership, but I, I don't like the way this was handled, but that's fine. Okay, let's vote.
Deb?
Hold on, I, I still, I had a question.
Ms. Rogers?
Just in the slides, it says that we were paying seven thousand a month for Conley, plus an additional, I think it was five hundred each, or I could be making up that number right now, for use of the cafeteria and the gym, but in the agreement, it says eleven thousand.
So, the, the contract, as it's written, written currently, is all in, so we were paying utilities...
Okay.
Each month, so when you roll in the utilities, it, it's the eleven thousand month, which is why they did it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
Just one comment.
Mr. Aguirre?
Just to, just to articulate the point, not, Madam Superintendent, what would be helpful is to have the information, which, Mr. Pacico's a hundred percent right, he said that at the subcommittee, and that was clarity. What I think should happen when we come to these meetings is, the memo that comes out to everybody should just answer that question ahead of time, because he's a hundred percent right, it made sense what he said then, what he said now. It's just that we don't get the backup that kinda says, here's the update from that, the clarifying was, it's all included, that's all. Thank you, I yield.
Appreciate it. Um, Deb, wanna call the wall, please?
I need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion, second.
A motion to approve, second.
I have a motion, second. Go ahead, Deb.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Larrabee?
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve eight, is a discussion and vote to approve the Westall two oh, as an elementary school, as referred by the Special Ed, Alternative Edge, and Early Childhood Subcommittee, and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer. Any discussion on the Westall?
I have a, I just have a question.
So, there was, we're talking about filling this school, so what...
What's going in there?
Yeah.
What's gonna go in there, Ms. Per, Mrs....
There are, there are three, well, two options, actually, one to make it a K to three, and one to make it a K to two. The, the reason why we included the K to three is because we do have a second grade bubble in, in the district and at Fonsika, and to open it, open it up as a K to three, and at Fonsika, and to open it up as a K-3 and then have those third graders roll over into fourth grade and then fifth grade would make sense. That would be our preference. Okay. So, my preference would be to get as many kids in that school as possible, because the concept right now, I just sat here and listened to all of these educators who deserve to get paid more, and we're sitting here spending money so ridiculously, it breaks my heart. So, that school, I think we need to have students in it, because an empty school there makes no sense to me, and if it costs a little more, I honestly don't care. We can't have an empty school there. All right. I mean, I'm ready, motion to approve unless somebody has something else.
Anything, Mr. Aguirre?
So, can somebody articulate what we're voting on? So, when we voted at the subcommittee, we voted to call it an elementary school.
Yeah.
And so, that was, in my opinion, if it was a two-unit school, it was K-5, two-unit school, that's what an elementary school is. So, where is it, other than this, whatever this is from the prior vote, because it's not, I don't see the backup here for this particular part, but please tell me what is different, and where is the information that's different for what we're voting on?
You got the three options as how we would open, well, two options, how we would open Westall. Certainly, this body has the power to say, we're gonna open it as an elementary, K-5. What we're saying is if we're going to, as we have talked, to divert some of those, to save some of the staffing monies, and so that we could support the pace, then we would open it as a K-3. Certainly, if this committee is saying, no, we're gonna go full in, K-5, then we go full in, K-5.
Can you just tell me, I'm curious what the baseline is. That's, I guess, what's missing. So, at the subcommittee, when we voted to say we were gonna open Westall, if money wasn't an issue for the Pace Center or anything else, was that meaning that we were gonna have 10 classrooms?
Right. It would be a K-5.
Well, it would be 12 classrooms.
That's, we would open it as a full elementary school.
Like, 12 classrooms. I said 10, but I'm just adding it in my head. So, at the subcommittee, we voted for 12 classrooms. Under the recommendations that we have here, are we just, like, trying to cut it in half and just not fill the other spaces? Or, like, what is it that we're actually trying to do?
Well, at the subcommittee, we were also asked to identify funding sources, and what we were doing, we're saying, if we only filled it with K-2 or K-3, we would be, there would be some cost savings, and then the kids, it would roll over the following year, but we would be able to use some of those funds to work on pace. That was the thinking.
So, I think, based on everything that I talked about, I wanna make a motion that we open it as a full K-5 school, like the subcommittee referred, 12 classrooms.
Second.
Well, that's option three, right?
No.
Doesn't matter what option it is.
That's not even an option.
Oh, it's just one.
Now, we're just referring back to it, but I agree with Ms. Pereira. This is ridiculous in some of the ways we're going about this, but 12 classrooms, that's what the subcommittee voted for. We vote for 12 classrooms. We keep hearing that we got all these problems with space, so we're gonna leave six classrooms open? Let's figure out a way to find the money in the budget, and if we go line by line, I'll help you find that money in the budget.
All right, all right. Hold on. Let's get to one thing at a time. Ms. Rodjik?
So, two things. One, number one, I agree that we open it as a K-5, because we can't say in one breath we don't have space. And then, I think that discussion about, you know, open it K-2, open it K-3 is a much larger discussion that we cannot have right here, right? So, that's a separate funding question. It is Fonsika, Tansy, and I think Watson, or 2501, that was on the list of playgrounds, and I'm not willing to take any of those playgrounds away either. But the other thing is, when we're opening Westall, we originally had that conversation about moving Tansy kids into there, and I am bringing this up, because those families are very anxious.
That's tabled.
And I think that they...
That's tabled.
But what I'm saying is, the families need to hear that they are not closing for the following school year. The families have not heard that.
You can say that right now, because that's not one of, that was not one of the recommendations.
Because the families have not heard that formally, and there's still a lot of anxiety about it. So, I'm bringing it up, because I hear it every single day, because it's been tabled, we haven't had a discussion. I'm not asking for a discussion, but I am asking that we at least tell those families for the 2425 school year that their kids aren't going anywhere.
Mr. Aguirre's gonna...
Mr. Aguirre?
So, I also agree with my colleague to my right. So, the problem is that since that was tabled in March, just because the committee tabled something doesn't alleviate people from wondering, can it ever be taken off the table? When is it gonna actually end? It was a sort of half-baked effort to figure out, all the parents are here, everybody's upset, let's just table it so that we can, we don't address it tonight. That didn't mean, let these people sit for four months and wait and say, well, is this gonna happen at any given time?
And they have.
And what ends up happening is, now we're here, it's May 20th, I'm not voting for that right now, and I might have voted for it a month and a half ago, but right now, I believe we take this vote. When this vote ends, I'm gonna make a motion that we take it off the table. When we take it off the table, we vote to say, to use city councilor's terms, leave to withdraw, whatever the hell you wanna call it, because we need to give them clarity now. Keep on saying, oh, it was tabled, it was tabled, is not leadership. So, when this is ending, in new business, I'm gonna make that recommendation to take it off the table, and we kill it, so everyone knows, and they don't have to worry about this for the next 60 days. I yield.
I just wanna be clear. The day that we had the parent forum at Tansy, I wrote an email to the school committee and asked if they would, they need to be thinking about doing exactly that for a special meeting or whatever, so that parents could have an answer, so they can move forward. So, to say it's not leadership, I did reach out, and so did Mrs. Rodjik, to this body to entertain a special meeting, so that we could let those folks know whether they're going to be Tansy or not in September.
And I can tell you that I never received a response, but that question was asked by both of us.
Yes.
Right then and there.
Who makes that recommendation? How many times did you recommend to the mayor that you wanted a special meeting to put this to bed?
I sent it to all of you.
No, no, to the mayor, because the mayor's the one that sets the agendas for the meetings. Did you say that over and over, and say, we have to close this? No. I yield.
Anything further on Westall?
No.
So, Mr. Aguirre offered an amendment, did it go K-5?
K-5, 12 classrooms.
All right, so, we're gonna just add that in to the discussion and vote to approve Westall as a K-5 elementary school, referred? Is that okay?
That's exactly as referred.
Do we have to vote on the amendment first, then the whole thing?
No.
Well, it's not an amendment.
What was it? It was exactly that.
Let's do the amendment first, K-5.
I don't believe we need an amendment.
It doesn't need it.
You don't need it?
It just says elementary school.
Because at the subcommittee, we were voting on a K-5.
Okay, so, let's go K-5. On 12.8, is it K-5? Deb, do you have a motion, a second?
I do.
Deb, call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodjik?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.9...
Can I take new business out of order?
Nope. 12.9.
Discussion and vote to approve prepaid...
Can we take new business out of order, please?
Sure.
I'm sorry?
Can I please take new business out of order?
Sure.
Anybody approve?
Yes.
Listen, I got 12.9, we're done with that, then we'll do you out of order. We got one left, because 10's already done.
Okay, sure.
Discussion and vote to approve prepaid tuitions, as presented by Kevin Almeida, Chief Financial Officer.
Motion to approve.
So, I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Aguirre?
My only question is, is are we totally maxed out?
I'm sorry?
Are we totally maxed out on the ability, how much money we can prepay at that $2.3 million figure?
For what I know as of today. So, the number may change if something else comes up from this bed department or whatever, but I'm, what I'm requesting here through this vote is the ability to prepay the $2.3 million, plus, if anything else comes up between now and the end of the year.
And how do I, is that a separate vote later?
No, so, in my, in my recommendation here, I said, I'm recommending the approval of the expenditure of $2.3 million prepaid special edge for FY '25. And what I write in the memo is, I'm requesting the ability to prepay any additional tuition amounts, up to three months of anticipated expenditures, assuming a balance remains within the school appropriation for FY '25.
And then, it'll come back to us, because you're gonna probably have surplus over the, that amount.
Correct.
So, I think it makes sense, we just, I'm just gonna use this opportunity again to please, I implore the superintendent, yourself, the other members, to have meetings with the legislatures, the legislators, so that you can actually create the accounts that I've been talking about for years, so that we don't have to do this exercise of trying to spend money and prepaying all this other stuff. There's mechanisms that we can do in state government to actually make this work. It's actually smart, saving money, putting it in a rainy day fund to use for following years. So, I just, once again, recommend, have that legislative meeting, please. With that, I yield. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Rodjik?
Can we actually pull two of those tuitions out of there? There's the Judge Rottenberg Center, and there's the Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative.
Sure, just if you can vote them separately.
Yeah, just to vote on those two separately.
Yeah, that's fine.
And each one separately.
Huh? Okay. So, you're abstaining from those two?
No, I'm abstaining from one.
Pulling them?
But we're pulling both, both separately, so...
Motion to approve all of his recommendations, except for the two Ms. Rodjik just mentioned.
I have a motion, I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll.
And SMEC. Can I do a roll call, man?
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Rodjik?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Motion to approve SMEC.
I have a motion to approve SMEC. I have a second, I have a second, Bobby. I have a motion, a second on SMEC. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Rodjik?
Abstain.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Can I get a motion, a second, on the Judge Rottenberg?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve $57,895.20 from an account other than JRC.
Wow.
He has listed here Judge Rottenberg Center. My motion is to use that equivalent amount of money, but count it towards any of the other ones. He could just increase it, because it's the overall percentage, correct?
What?
If we don't wanna vote on the Rottenberg, because you might go down on that vote?
Why aren't we not voting?
The Judge Rottenberg Center?
Yeah, so, I guess my question is, what happens if the kid's already placed there, and I have to pay for him anyway?
We're not prepaying that. You pay for it out of, that's a separate vote next year. I'm talking about for the prepaid piece. You have it listed here as 57, but we can take 57 and divide it up on these other lines to be, the bottom line is, what's limiting you, correct?
That's fine, yeah.
So, if we just say it's gonna be a wash, and then, next year, when we vote to pay for tuitions, that vote will be the same as...
Yep.
Does that make sense?
Okay.
So, add 57, 895 to the bottom line, is what Mr. Aguirre is saying. Did you make a motion?
Yes, any account other than JRC, or whatever it's called, JRC.
I have a motion and a second.
I just need to clarify that. So, we're making a motion to take that money, not prepay JRC.
And put it in the bottom line.
And we'll prepay somewhere else. Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, I can't make the motion. Who's second?
I second it.
Bobby.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Rodjik?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay. Now, Mr. Aguirre's motion was to take item, business item, new business 14, out of order. Can I get a motion, a second, on that?
Motion made.
Second.
Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yeah.
Yes. Ms. Rodjik?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Aguirre, your motion, please?
Make a motion that we lift from the table the superintendent's original recommendation to close the Tansy school off the table.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodjik?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. On the motion?
I make a motion to deny the superintendent's recommendation to close the Tansy school for this current fiscal year.
Do I have a second?
Actually, I should take that back, just close it, period.
Do I have a second?
What was it?
I'm basically saying that, take a recommendation and get rid of it.